Alright guys, we're going to go ahead and get started so we can stay on time. So I will call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And we're going to go ahead and start with the innovation and from the pilgrims as offered to do that if you want to be can and stay standing for the flag to move into the afterwards, please.
Our dear precious heavenly father, we thank you tonight for bringing us here. Thank you for your guidance and protection. We ask you tonight to watch over us as we make decisions for the city. God our steps, God our thoughts, and God our words, and just we pray. Amen. From Renee.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its equal repertory, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have people here tonight. That's great. Alright, we're going to go ahead and start off with roll call and the whole council is present along with the crowd and Joe Walter and Emily Whitlow. Sorry, I was getting my name wrong. We'll go ahead and start with the agenda of the room. Do I have a motion?
I've got a question on the agenda before we pass them. We need to pull the financials out.
Can we do that when we get to the discussion part?
Yes.
Okay, great. Is there a motion about the agenda?
I made a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking at the numbers and the budget numbers are all gone crazy.
They have all?
They've all changed.
That's, that budget number longer will show you the today number.
Then I'd like to know the actual number, I don't have a problem with it, but the budget number shouldn't change.
Well, it does. Depending on how QuickBooks works, in this particular report, it was, it's pulling the two day number because what we're doing is we're pulling financial through the end of the month. She wasn't able to pull the report right first of the month. If you pull it at first of the month and you allow it to go through the full fiscal year, what happens is yes, you have to pull your budget numbers, but your numbers on your accounting for the month will include whatever has happened this month.
Well, that makes absolute sense for the action column, but the budget column shouldn't change.
I think this is what we'll do. If there is one person, one council member who has a question about it, well, go ahead and pull it up. I will double check on it with T. Martin. And we will look at it and then we will bring it back to the next meeting if everybody is over the floor. Because if one person has a question, it's not asking.
That means next month we have to vote on it without discussion.
Right. Is that a question?
Yes.
Is that a statement?
No, I'm asking. But then we have to vote on it in June.
We will have to vote on it in June with a work session. If we're not able to get it cleared up to everybody's satisfaction, we'll be.
I'm asking, okay with you? Yes.
Okay. Or go ahead, Jake.
Yes, there's a motion on the table, so we need to do something with the motion either vote for it or instead of carrying it out, we can table it.
Can I amend it?
Sure.
So I will amend my motion to approve the agenda without the financials.
Actually, we could do that in, yeah, wouldn't we just approve it?
You want to pull financials off? So there's a couple of options. You can approve the agenda as it is. You can approve the agenda taking out financials and moving it to your June meeting. You can wait till consent agenda and pull it out of consent agenda and talk about it under new business. This is your free office.
So I'm making a motion to remove financials from the consent agenda?
Okay.
Isn't that right?
Give it to me.
Move it to the main work session.
Okay. I sent. Second? One favor. Thank you. Let's go on to the consent agenda, keeping in mind, with mind, we've already removed the financials. It's removed from the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the financials.
A second?
Oh, I have to repeat it, sorry.
Okay.
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, Karen. Okay, we're going to go on to committee reports. Cool involvement. I'm just going to say everybody's ready to get out of school and the graduation coming up. We have some high school students going to state this weekend for track. And we have the black and green football game. That's the, where they take the team and they divide it now. They get to play each other and the winner gets a, a good dinner, not hot dogs. And that's all I have. I know that you were at the school council meeting today. Do you want to share anything?
I was, and I do. I'm a school council for Walnut Grove Elementary School. Our school recently applied for and received a $20,000 grant for shade sales outside for cover for teachers and for students and new playground equipment. So it's going to be a big deal for Walnut Grove Elementary School. Also, the exciting news, we have gotten our STEM certification, so we will be a STEM school. So that's very exciting. And I do not have anything for the DVA. We will meet on June, we'll meet in June.
Okay. Thank you. Planning and zoning commission, I don't think, is there anything to read the board just a little first?
Yes ma'am, I can be brief.
Okay.
I'll stand in for Megan. Because planning commission hasn't met this year, but we will be having a June meeting. City did receive an application from Benchmark. Actually, Bollman was the applicant on behalf of Benchmark Grading. And the city will fully accept that application tomorrow for unfeeling the fees. We're going to schedule a public hearing on that on Tuesday, June 18th. And then we'll go, and that will be a public hearing there and then it will go to your June work session for the discussion and then it'll come on your July 11th or 13th, which is one of those for your council, for your council meeting, I wrote that down in a different piece of paper. So that's forthcoming, that is for a PUD request on the north side of the parkway. But I will withhold any further comment until we formally accept it. But there are, once, there are documentation that city all, Kimberly and Sonny have a few want to see it and I will hear it forward. Other than that, we are still anticipating a lot of homes to submit subdivision plans off the Cannon Farm Road. And we are, we have recently re-reviewed Walnut Grove commercial office space, which is the previous reselling last year, we've issued additional comments on that. And so, once those are addressed and they give up, then we can discuss then being eligible for a permit. And then we are also, you all, as you all are aware, the Grove Park, Walton County building is under construction and we have done some sewer plan with leave on behalf of you all and the county. So there's, we issued some comments on that.
Good. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we have any idea what type of sewer capacity the county needs for the first phase?
Yes, we do. I think they have, I believe the number of apps that were set aside as part of that previous. Agreement would be sufficient for their first phase. Their second phase, I don't have that file open, but would be probably, I think there'd be a lot more for the second phase because of some of the use that they're going to do. But I'm understanding that some of yours down the road, but we can get that information before then and make that available to you.
So that first phase then will take up all the sewer capacity currently you have?
Correct. I think that's what we discussed in the previous meeting that one, it was about ninety, 240, please don't quote me on that, but it was, should be, should leave you on with about 650 gallons per day of unreserved capacity when you're currently.
Joe, could we make a practice that when something is accepted by the city, like this put application, that a copy that goes to every council in New York? Is that okay?
Sure, yes, yeah.
I'd like them to.
Since we haven't fully accepted.
Exactly, exactly.
Another thing we talked about for council benefit too, because one like the last meeting we had is when plans come in for just regular permitting review. We've also discussed about having the applicant or the developer come to your work session, kind of explain what they're wanting to do. Assuming zoning is the place that's more of a permitting exercise.
Exactly.
We talked about, so we'll make sure we'll do that.
Okay, great.
And we can, if you want, we can get, if you want Benchmark to come to your work session and talk about the products that's under permitting review, we can do that as well.
I think it's a good idea. I just, I think the council needs to stay up on what's going on and if they can ask questions, we can probably, that time maybe another time, but it takes for everybody rather than trying to get everybody up to date at different times.
And I think as long as, Jake and this, as long as we're following the zoning procedures law and we're doing due notice and that information presented to you all ahead of the meeting is for your own digestion and understanding, but that you, you answer, you ask questions at the appropriate times when they're actually formally presented to you.
Sure.
That you aren't.
I'd like to encourage council too. At the planning and zoning meeting, you can sit in the audience and you'll hear firsthand what's going, going in front of them that will eventually come to us. And it's very helpful. And you will have some of your answers before you even see them in front of you and you can ask questions or be prepared to ask questions. And keep it moving for those people who want to come into the city and do some development.
So, yes, so what I can do mayor is with the, once we, once the city's formally accepted that application, there's a lot of moving parts, but, but we can, I can give you the nursing bolts in the PDF and send that, and send that out and then if you, I also have a scaled down version of the traffic study if you are also light, light reading, we can remind you.
Oh, and there's a copy of the traffic study.
There's also one in the city.
Which anybody can see at any time.
So what I, what we talked about pupil is once, once that's been fully accepted, make a file, have everything in there, it's available for public review and then we'll put on anything related to that case that comes through or email or hand submitted.
In it.
It'll be in the file.
That sounds great. Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
Did anybody have, I don't know many questions. All right, so we are going to move on to our library report with Dana Seager.
Hello, good to see you. I have quite a package for all of you tonight because we are, I can say we're about to hit our busy season, but quite honestly, I think it could be nice to do tonight. I just left, we had Pokemon card swap tonight, so I just left from that. And so we had a full parking lot, lots of fun, one of my favorite activities. I say that about a lot of events because we have different activities for different ages, so for that age, it's one of my favorites. Let's see, but before I get started, I noticed that Emily is going to be presenting tonight on Little Free Library and I just want to thank her so much for her donation of hundreds of books to our library, children's books. So I was able to give out about a hundred books at a community impact event just recently and we'll give away lots of those books for summer reading program prizes. And Emily will actually be stocking with some of those books, the other Little Free Libraries all over Walton County. So we're a small library, but we stock all the Little Free Libraries in Walton County from our library. That's how many donations we get. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, thank you so much. They're awesome books. So to begin, the June calendar is packed. We have events every single day except for the days that I won't be there. I'm kind enough to plan anything major, I'm pleased that I won't be in the library. Also, I was training a new volunteer tonight when I left and so just to put it out there that, I looked at our activity report from last month, for example, which is a typical month, we have 30 volunteer hours just for last month, which is not a super busy month. Emily, her, Ella, the new person, volunteer that I had tonight, who's getting Bay Harbor Hours, she'll get 15 hours just in the next probably five days. So as you can see, our, part of our library functioning so well is because of our volunteers. So they make a huge impact on our library. Also, we will be hiring. I've received two resignation letters. One person has retired, one person got a job and he can double the pay. So just so you know, I did interviews on Monday, so we have a great candidate. She's young, super energetic and excited, and so I'm really looking forward to her. But just so you know, we're always, you know, looking for really good volunteers and really good donations. So just wanted to mention her. Again, I think the program, a few of the programs that I'm going to recommend for this summer that I don't want anyone to miss is we tend to do those on Fridays, typically between 11:00 in the morning and if it's like this year, 1:00 in the afternoon. Early in the day tends to be good for, for people or right after lunch. So R&amp;P Homestead is a zoo that comes, they bring exotic animals, super amazing, I highly recommend it. The Ken Scott Magic Show, hopefully y'all know Ken Scott, or can come to his show, he does a great job. It's also a comedy show. He's a huge supporter of the library as well, so he gives us a great price and we love having him. Southeastern Snake Encounter is probably the most popular program that we have in our library every year. It's one of my favorites and I don't like snakes, but you learn so much that you've come to appreciate that everything in the ecosystem plays a part, even snakes. So please come to that. Those are some of the main date performers that we have. Of course, in July, we have Shell's Magic Poodle Show. Cirque du Canine is the new name for her show this year, so I'm wondering if she's branching out from Poodles, guess you'll have to come and bite out. That's in July. And then the other big, brand new program that we have in June is a brand new book club called World Travelers. So we have it for children and then we'll have another one for young adults and adults. Ms. Barbara pours her heart into the programs that she does at her library, so it'll be about recipes, different continents, she goes to all that. So I highly recommend if you're looking for a book club, that's going to be pretty awesome. And then now I have to look at my actual report to see if I'm just beginning to be important. Big thing, summer reading program pickup is that the after school gets out, which is the 23rd, school gets out on the 22nd, which is the Wednesday. Everybody that comes on the 23rd will get a free book or a free bag for signing up for summer reading program that day. Summer reading program is for infants all the way up through elderly, so anyone of any age can participate. I have three full, three fully stocked carts of book prices to give out this summer. So, and then I have some backups too. So we will not run out, we should not run out of books this summer. There's hundreds and hundreds of them. I'm really excited about them. Just a reminder, we'll be closed for Memorial Day, which is on a Monday. And then we'll be closed June 10th, which is June 19th, and that's a birthday. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, what I do have to comment, I did, I did go to the library this weekend, I saw the books that she was talking about, we parked and it was a long vacation right there. It was, it sounded like, wow, and the bags were so cute. Go join the reading program, there's not just kids books, she does a lot of books.
I know, all ages covered, Boardwalks for infants, they have those as well. And then I will be at Walnut Grove Elementary School on Monday for the 7th meeting to talk about the certification and, and all of that. So I'm super excited about that. I love partnering with our schools. I will be going around at all the schools within the next week or so to give them information about summer reading program, swag bag, all the stuff that they need to know, so.
I will say that I got to go to the Homestead Zoo and the Snake and Towner last year and it was just so much fun and it was, like, you can't get a parking spot in this town.
I am going to change the setup this year. Hopefully we'll have more space available for the day programs so that people will be happy keeping between the stacks of books to see the shows. But, but either way, I mean, it's got to be packed regardless of how much space I try to create.
I can tell from last.
I am changing it this year. So yeah, come early, parking is at Church in the Grove and Park in the Field and the grassy area because the library parking lot will fill up really quickly. And also come early if you want good seats. Or if somebody is pregnant or elderly, please encourage them to come early as well so they can get a good seat, get in, get a good parking spot, help us.
And we don't have enough and more people at the library, we need to pay more attention to our food bank.
Yeah.
To our, you know, stage.
Fully stocked right now. I mean, it empties and then it's always empty, it gets always empty. That happens throughout the day and it happens from day to day, but it doesn't stay empty for long. So it might be empty a certain hour of the day, but it doesn't typically stay empty. And I don't, I say empty, it's never been empty. It, it has less at certain times, but then I restock it throughout the day and we get donations almost every day, definitely every day. Thank you.
Okay, the next up is over comment. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share or say? Come on up. Come on up and say your name again and your address, please.
Yeah, Jameson Fint, if you want to.
261 Overlook Drive, Angie. Stop, you said, okay.
Say your name again, please.
Turn these to Jameson.
Only thing I have, Walnut Grove Elementary. Yeah, two little girls, I don't know one of the little girls, but they recently went to, was it state or national?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Great, they're, they're, now.
Very good. So just wanted, because we haven't really seen much about, you know, things like that that started being posted on the Walton page on Facebook and everything like that, it'll make the kids feel like they're doing something and maybe even get recognized by council over here.
So we have that in the next meeting?
Exactly. Because they would love it. Yeah.
I'll talk to Coach Turner.
All right. That's it. That's all.
My son was on the archery team. The elementary school and the middle school and the high school. Oh, really, Jack? Until he took on football. Archery is so much safer. I think so, but it is. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to come up? No? Okay. All right, well, come on up. Just make sure you say your name and your address, please.
Okay. My name is Ethel B. Johnson. I live in 37 Carroll. I am, I live in two places. I'm in.
Been missing y'all.
Yeah, you've been here. I just wanted to say that I'm an artist and I'm also an author. I have several books. I used to stay in Conyers, they used to call me the Conyer Artist. I do a variety of work, I'm in Georgia, artist of disability every year. I have, my work has been all over Georgia and I have been here for years, but I'm still going strong, trying to get up here. I have many children books. I went to the library, the library, but I've been so busy trying to finish work out because the children, more mature than 30 years, I'm retired and I'm this age, but I mean, I look like, what I do. But anyway, I would love to share my work with Walnut Grove. There've been other places that have awarded me, but this is where I live. And I was, I have taught so many children. I have worked over in Alabama, I have worked over in Conyers and different places around Georgia, but I'm here now. So I'm trying to get the children, my books are very positive about children, about life lesson. I think they're very good for any child because I've taught babies all the way up to about eighth grade. I have did art council for, art council for county. I have did my work, I've been in these places over there for children and many, many more things I could say, but it's all because of the Lord, the heaven first. And my dear husband, who has been supporting me for years. And I love Walnut Grove. It's a scenery, it's a beautiful place. I did a piece when trying to sort of like Walnut Grove, I didn't know I was going to live here. I didn't know I did, it was a picture, but it really happened. But it's amazing to be here. Sorry to come out and let you know I'm here. Look, I'm trying to get started, it'll take a little while, but I'm coming.
We already have a couple of ideas up here. Thank you for coming up.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. You're wonderful. Your husband too. I admire your human fiction.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and move on then. We're going to start with old business and with one of our youngest citizens. So we're going to go ahead and ask Emily if she has anything else to add to your presentation from last week, last two weeks ago. No? Okay. Emily came and gave a presentation on a, a library box that we can put out here and she's going, she told us how she was going to help stock it, how she was going to promote it, why she's doing it, the organization that she's doing it on behalf of to get her next award. We asked some questions and she did an outstanding job. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask the council if they have a motion that they would like to put forth.
I'm making a motion that we accept the young lady's offer to put us up on a library box and that it gets worked out, I don't know if these people are the motion, but anything legal or where it's located, that sort of thing, gets worked out in the process.
Jim, you can do an agreement on that, right? Okay. Is there any discussion? No?
I'm very proud of you.
All right, all in, all in favor? All unanimous, so it passes. Thank you, Emily. We'll go ahead and work on the agreement. It's everything we discussed last time. It's nothing surprising or anything like that and then we'll get to the viewing call and we'll make sure you guys are on board with it. And we'll move forward from there and you just go ahead and start your project, okay? Thank you for doing that. Okay. Next thing on the list is the City of Walnut Grove Lions Club made a, the offer of a donation of a bird bat. There was discussion at the last meeting and I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor now for any motions by council.
I'm going to make a motion, we can talk about it during the session, but I'm going to make a motion to not accept that particular bird bat.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Uh, no.
And against? Your name, it's not going to go either way. Okay. Lynn is abstaining because she's a member of the Lions Club, for those who don't know. Okay, so that did not pass. Okay, next we're going to go on to the text amendment for the ER.
What? The motion did pass.
It passed, I'm sorry, it cast, but it's not going to be accepted.
Right. I just want my motion with the ERA.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the text amendment for the ER news. Joe, if you wouldn't mind if you would just, you know, just give a brief synopsis. We discussed it at the last meeting, everybody is very familiar with it.
For the public's benefit, essentially what you all are discussing and will take action on tonight is to make one change to the land development ordinance, section 501A, which is your sewer use ordinance. You're going to change the number of what is considered equivalent residential units of 210 gallons per day consumption of sewers back to 250, which is what was, gives you a little bit more margin for error and it just kind of gets you consistent with the most other jurisdictions that do sewer allocation. And because it was an ordinance, the land development ordinance would just need to go through the proper process.
Okay.
And this should be fairly straightforward. If there's any particular questions, and Eric, if you want the, if you need, want the answer to the road sewer, I may have my file on my car, but not going to give you an email with that information to you.
I do have a question about this one. This isn't gonna put us in a negative, right?
No, no, actually, this would actually give you more of a buffer. Most of your sewer customers are not using two hundred and fifty gallons per day. The, what Chris, Chris Bonelson's flows show less, however, I think previous effort was to try to squeeze a few more taps out of what you got in your capacity. This gives you more, a buffer against unusual sewer issues flows. But this, you know, your capacity is pretty much allocated now, um, until there's, the plant gets expanded.
So with passing the two fifty ERUs and the county, they still have their taps for their parks.
Yes, my understanding is those were already, is already, that was already an understanding on that agreement. I believe that was, maybe y'all had further discussions about that. But no, it won't affect them, it just, it just basically gives you, tells you all that until you expand your sewer plant, there's not really any room to accept any more customers.
I know exactly what you're saying and we're in good shape. Everything's been estimated or calculated at two fifty.
Yes, yes, the, your, the two ten was several, well, maybe eight months in order, there were no new requests. You're, you're, y'all are good and you have plenty of reserves. When I say reserves, you have, you have a buffer there, which is what you want is the sewer.
Right, yes. Okay, thank you, council.
Motion to approve the text amendment. Make a motion to approve the text amendment, company ERUs, the two fifty.
A second. Any discussions? All in favor? Anybody against? None? Okay. All right, and move on from there to new business. And, um, the next thing I need to do is our point four twenty-five, proposed budget. When I say proposed, um, I want to make sure everybody understands, this is what I am presenting to council as the budget that I feel will work for the city for the next year. Um, there will be a public hearing coming up where anybody from the city can come and have questions answered, discussion. Um, council will also have a work session where they will ask questions or have a discussion. If things need to be moved around before the actual voting in of the budget, then things may change on the proposed budget. So I just want you to make sure everybody understands, the safe proposed budget that I'm presenting, and there will be discussions and then if things need to change, it will be adjusted and updated and before the final votes, okay? So with that being said, we move ahead and give this to council. Thank you. Go ahead. And you've got one, and I think we're gonna give those, women, to Rachel. They've already got those. That group, yeah. For anybody in the... I also want to make everybody aware that this budget will be available starting tomorrow morning at nine AM when the city opens. You can come up there at any point and get a copy of this budget. And it's actually a packet of information. You can also, I spoke to Dana, and you can go to the library and get a copy of it. You can go on the city's Facebook page and get a link to it. And you can go on our website and get a link to it also. The documents will be in all of those places. We're required to make it available, easily or readily available to the public, okay? If you go through it, you will notice that there's different sections. There's county members, departments, we can get everybody to understanding the budget, fund summary, revenue and income expenditures, department details, special funds, highlighted changes. We're not gonna go through it now. I want everybody to take the chance to look at it. If there's any questions, you can bring it to the public hearing. Comments? Call me. I'm always available. Talk to any council member and they'll be calling too. Um, I do need to make a special note on this. This document was because of the hard work of several council members. Essentially, Maxine McClanahan was able to go through all of our budget information. And she was able to pull out the information that's needed for this document. She basically did a forensic audit, um, hours and hours and hours of going through. Because we wanted a very clear picture of where money has been spent, where it hasn't been spent, what was available, what hasn't been used, so that we don't have a budget full of fluff. Rachel also came up. In the past, I've sat here and I've seen these documents like this and I'm like, wow, wouldn't it be great if we could do something like that? And then one day Rachel came up and she showcased this idea. And I'm like, this is what we need. And so that's what we went with. This is the document that we're very proud of. I'm very proud of the numbers in here. I have decided on what I think is the best for the city, but I'm open to any kind of conversation. Um, but I have looked at all of the figures that have, that were available to me that Maxine and Rachel and I have looked at. Um, I have spoken extensively with our public works manager about what his needs are. I've spoken with our city clerk about what she feels some of our, our needs are up in the city. And so I think we have a pretty good document here. I think it's a very comprehensive, clear idea of where we want to go. So with that being said, I need to thank Rachel and Maxine for all of their hard work.
So, thank you.
Yeah, it is definitely a team effort, but when you look through this, you'll see that, um, it's a very clear picture of where the city is and where we're looking to go. So we'll discuss it in the next few weeks. Like I said, call if you have any questions, talk to a council member if you have any questions. And, um, then we'll go from there and we'll get this thing passed on time this year. And we'll get into where we need to be. This, this is the foundation for a lot of the work that is gonna happen, that Brian gets to go on with. And, uh, you're gonna see a lot of changes in the city, a lot of, uh, a lot of things happening based on this budget. Okay? So with that being said, it has officially been presented to the council. We are on schedule, there's a schedule here, you can see where, how long it's been work done and where we're going from here. And there will be a public hearing coming up and that'll be advertised. And then we will have a vote. Okay? And that's that. Okay. We need, I, I didn't mean that. Shoot. All right, that's okay. Public Works, we're gonna go ahead and bring up Brian. Please. And, go ahead. Let's see you back.
Yes. Mayor and Council, I like to start my reports with, we're working hard to get our grass mowed on city property throughout the city. And our mowers are really what it's... Also, we're getting clothes for dead trees in the park. So if you see some other constable names on, you know, that, that one. And we've had no vandalism this morning in the park.
We...
And also, we've delivered the little Ford Ranger, which will be the code enforcement truck back to city hall. And it's got new tires, new brakes, um, oil changes, the stickers on it, some car tags. Everything covers, it's very nice across the city. Also replaced a few spray cans that the sewer flowing this month. And then working with mayor and pumping process, we have had a little work done on our filter system. It's the PC and there's a screen that goes, and that system that makes it clean the filter down. And also there's a little filter that we found that was, had a crack in it for some reason. And it's been replaced by one too. So that should be up and running pretty soon. And it's something we've been cleaning the filter manually, so it's, it's, we don't have to do that much. Actually saved a lot of time. Yes.
It's a dirty job.
It's a dirty job.
Yes.
Pretty excited by having that.
Great.
Also, we're looking at first, a big pressure washer for public works to do some cleanup around the city with buildings, sidewalks and whatnot like that. And also hopefully the pitch, it's made in that style. And we'll be hanging American flags on the electrical poles through town and that's for veterans' day. At the, it's toward the end of this one. Memorial, yes, I'm sorry.
We do it for all of them.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sorry. Every memorial, absolutely. But that's all I have.
Oh, I see, did you get your computer?
It's tied from, yes, same time. They still want me to clean up the printer for signing. There is no printer.
Okay.
Other than that, other than that, it's worth it.
I think we'll be in, in the house next week. I'll make sure they come down and see you.
Perfect.
It's, uh, China. Anything else, Brian?
Uh, that's all I have.
Do you have an update on the lights at all?
I'll leave a six mark for that.
Oh, I thought they used authority. Yeah.
That's all right.
Leave down a few quotes, I thought we was putting that in the budget for the...
Oh, it's in, it's in there, but it's, you were getting some of the quotes, so it's exciting news that it's gonna be expensive.
Yes, I have, I have that one quote, I saw it.
The other company came through too.
Okay.
And it's right about the same thing.
Okay. All feel like...
All feel like it's massive. Well, they're running out for three years. What was I gonna do about that?
Brian and I have had many conversations about the fact that there are things within the city that are not operating as they should be, and they should be. You know, we've been talking about there's things over here for swings, but we don't think swings came from them. So what we're doing is we're going around and looking at everything and getting things working like they're supposed to be. Um, as a city, we're supposed to be providing services and places for our citizens. And we've got to make sure that all of, everything is working properly. And it's available. And if we have lights at the ballpark, we, those lights should be working. And quite honestly, it's another revenue source for the city.
The lights, depending for themselves.
The last night seeing the lights on Scotch has been fifteen thousand dollars. Been a while.
It's in the ballpark for the ball. How much is that?
I don't know.
Fifteen for them to...
Rent it.
It's fifteen dollars. Fifteen? Fifteen. Brown. Okay, we didn't look at it.
But that's part of the base goods that we're looking at right now. Yeah, the piece hasn't been adjusted. Anything else?
Uh, speaking of ball field, it's looking nicer than we can call it.
It was even...
It's still that quality, you know?
Yeah, we started that back up again in what, December, January?
Yes.
Right? Yeah.
And it's been going for quite a while, but it, it really rough when you start it.
Yeah.
Really rough.
Looks real good.
Well, that's it now, the grass has changed.
And city hall too.
The modern city hall, let's see.
Yeah, the whole one.
Yeah, and whatever. My mom was saying, keep, keep running over trying to get them out. We get rid of what we do.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
You good?
I'm in perfect.
No? Anybody? Thank you, Brian. Guys are doing okay, right?
Oh, yes, very good.
Good. Good, good, good. Okay, next is Kimberly, as our city clerk.
We had fifteen state patrol tickets, twelve county tickets, um, two pavilion rentals, and then seventeen ball field rentals. Um, for our accounts, our general operating account had six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Our sewer service district account had sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Our two thousand and nineteen's lost, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Our money market, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents. And then our sewer money market, um, one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and five cents.
Can you go back and print in that off for us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Kimberly. Hey, for me, uh, really, it's been all about budget, budget, budget the past few weeks. Um, staying on top of a few things. We have our rooms at the library and the roofs at the library and city hall being one of that. Thank you, Erica, for getting that set up. Um, they were supposed to come today, the adjusters, but because of the rain, they weren't able to come. We'll get them back up here. Um, been working with all the different departments within the city, trying to keep things moving. I enjoy working with everybody. Um, there's a lot of things, moving cars within the city. And it's a challenge, but it's a fun challenge. Um, working with these guys has been a lot of fun. And, um, I just had a chance to go to the Small Cities Conference and it was very ironic. Every single class that I took was so important to what is going on in the city right now. Uh, one was about employee benefits, which we have added to the budget. One was, it was just, everything was just so on point. Clarified a few things for me, uh, which was really nice. Um, it was even nicer that we got that little grant to offset one of ours, Rachel Lynn also. Um, and it's, it's a chance to not only learn from the people doing the presenting, but to have conversations with people at other cities and you can learn a lot from them because everybody's gone through something that you're going through or you can share something that you've done. Um, and we experience all of that. And it was over in Carrollton, we were up at six o'clock every morning, driving over there. Probably home at five, but it was great, it was great. Um, I look forward to Savannah and doing even more of that, um, and, and learning a lot more also. It's, I think it's very important that, and you'll notice in the budget, there are line items for conferences, travel, for DMs, all of that stuff. Um, some people don't think it's important. I, having been on that side and on this side, um, I wholeheartedly believe in, in people in council gaining more knowledge and not just gaining it, but using it, um, bringing it back, sharing it with other council members, um, and telling you all about these things. And igniting the passion in some of the younger people in our city so that they want to come up here one day and do this. So I was just thrilled to go, I'm thrilled to still be here. Um, and, uh, I'm looking forward to the next, however many years I'm going to be here. Because I think we're gonna, we're gonna make a big difference, um, in our city. And I hope that you all are on board and willing to, to come along for the ride or be a part of that change too. I just want to let you know, we've put out a job application and a job description for the code enforcement. We've had one application. Um, we're leaving it open until Monday morning. If anybody else would like to come and apply for the position, they are welcome to. It is a part-time job. Um, we do look for people who are a little bit experienced in government enforcement, government, work, cities, that type of thing. Uh, but we will make a decision on Monday to go ahead and close that out. And then we will do interviews with however many we have. And hopefully we will have somebody who is pretty qualified. I took a look at the first one and I think it's, it's a pretty good one. Um, so I'm excited about that. And we are bringing that person in not at ninety dollars, like what we used to have at code enforcement, but somewhere between twenty and twenty-five dollars an hour, depending, uh, on their experience and their education level. Meaning certifications, stuff like that. Doesn't necessarily have to have a college degree. Okay? Um, I think that's it for me. I'm thankful that the, uh, the budget process is, this big part is done. So we can go ahead and focus on a few other things and that's really it. All right, now it's the town hall where anybody can come up and say anything they want. Is there anybody who wants to add anything or be careful about there? Is there anybody in? Yes.
Three things. I want to thank Brian and his team for all the work that we do around the library. It's never looked better, including the parking lot, the debris from leaves and trees and grass. Um, I really appreciate it and you guys do a really good job. I also appreciate the mayor for her help with that as well. Um, it makes a difference, you know, how our library looks when people come to see it for the first time and then also when they walk into the doors. So that first part, before they even get in... So that first part, before they even get inside, really does make a difference and I'm so grateful. Secondly, I commend you on the trainings that you do, the conferences. I'm required to do training every single month. That's part of my job. Not as much as conferences, which I'd like to do more of, thirty minutes to an hour, sometimes a little more than that every month. But it's so important for me to stay up to date on changes and everything going on. So I think that is so important to do that. And now I'm trying to remember the third thing. Just thank you all for all that you do. I appreciate it.
I want to say one thing. We go to conferences, there's many, a couple of conferences that we go to a year, but we can only do so many. We're not going to sit here and spend all the city's money. There is free training online that many of us do.
Yes. All the training I do is free, by the way. But it is also required. It's part of my job to stay up to date every single month. And I just think that's really important. And although you're passionate about your job, you should be doing that anyway.
But the online training is provided by the Georgia Municipal Association of Carl Vincent Institute of Education, which is based out of University of Georgia. And we have all created very good relationships with the people who do those trainings, our district person, Sheri Daly.
Carl Vincent training is exceptional. I receive supervisory training, it is very, very good.
Yeah, it is very good. So there's lots of free training with you too, that you may not be aware of. But I have thought about suggesting to our council that we all go ahead and get together a listing of all the training that we have had and make that available. It's important because if somebody has something they want to ask about, they can go and look and see. This person's been in this kind of training. They may know more about what they're talking about. And by all of us doing different things, it creates a much larger grouping of knowledge so that we have, we're in a really good place. And I'm very excited about the future. So, okay. Anybody else have anything for comments?
Do you know when they're going to come fix my yard?
I wish I could tell you exactly, Callie. I am working with some government agencies on funding and I'm also working on some companies coming out and getting quotes. I know it's taking a little bit of time.
It's okay.
Okay. I will keep, like I did before, when we're going to come over there, I will call to make sure we get permission before we get it done. But I would say in the next couple of months.
I don't know if I'll jump the fence.
Yeah, yeah, I'm staying away from your shepherd. Yeah, in the next couple of months, I'm anticipating that along with the two things over in ML Code being taken care of. Yeah. Just be careful, okay?
Okay.
All right, I appreciate the patience.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Since we don't have executive session tonight, oh, I'm sorry, council. Let's start over here with Linda first. Linda, any thoughts? Anything?
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Linda, for your library talks. We're excited. Dana, thank you for your presentation for June. I'm super excited for y'all. I know it's going to be busy and just crazy. Yeah, I feel like it is crazy now. I know all the parents know what May December means. It's the end of school and it's like, ah! Everybody's just being good, so we're feeling that. Hope we're making you proud, woman group. And thank you for being here with us.
Okay. Okay.
The enclave, the Westoff, I did get in touch with Captain Wisnet and there should be police presence over there during best hours. Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm looking forward to Savannah. Every year we come back and we're just on fire with ideas and knowledge. And it's just so exciting. It's nice to have that every year because this can be a very consuming job. And it's nice just to get that education and it just fills you with the passion for the reason that you started this anyway. I am meeting the adjusters, meeting for the roofs at city hall and the library is due until tomorrow. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about our tree city.
Okay, that's it. I'm looking at the back as I get to that first session. Looking at.
Okay. Speaking of Carl Vinton Institute, I am excited. I'm going to attend a class there next week, starting on Tuesday and running through Friday with them. It's a very unusual class. It's called the Robert E. Knox Leadership Institute. And I don't know how to describe it. But I'm very excited about it because I think I can learn a lot that I can bring back. Because it fills a whole lot with, if I understand correctly, there's a whole lot of secrecy to this class. But from my understanding, it helps us in our city as to how to become even more cohesive and how to have our blended family and have our blended family work and to work right. So I'm real excited to be doing that.
You want to share anything else? Come on, Maxine. Hi out there.
I was going to hold it. It's an expensive class. So I hadn't really think about asking the city for the money. When I say expensive to me, it was eight hundred and fifty dollars. That's expensive for a class.
It is expensive.
But I did ask about taking the class and I was told to go for it. And so I did, I applied for the scholarship and I got it. So I'm going. An eight hundred and fifty dollar scholarship.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, fantastic. Very, very. Just some of everybody. It's insane. You have anything else to add? You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. So no executive session tonight? That's not necessary, right? Okay, so we are going to, I'm going to go ahead and. All in favor of those journalists? They're second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in.
Okay, all in favor. Thank you guys for being here.